Ladies and gentlemen, let me announce the start of our second regular session of our conference. And we have five presentations for today. And the first one presenter is Alexey Vachnin with his presentation Using Cooperative Coevolution in Large-Scale Black-Box Constraints Satisfaction Problem.
Can you hear me? Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for introducing me. Yeah, today I'm going to talk about using cooperative evolution, but still black box constraints function problems. Here on this slide, you can see the presentation outline. Firstly, I'm going to talk about motivation and problem stated. After that, I'm going to say a few words about related work. And in the middle of presentation, we will talk about proposed approach and experimental settings. And pre-last section will be about discussions of experimental results and final conclusions and other works, other plans. I'd like to repeat because I had a tutorial, but I think someone is new here. In general, if we are speaking about large-scale global optimization, it means that we have deal with the problems with many hundreds or thousands of objective variables. Many real-world constraint large-scale global optimization problems are usually complex and not well studied. So they're viewed as like box optimization problems. It's a challenging task for a wide range of modern approaches to optimize such type of problems. But evolutionary algorithms in general have proved their efficiency in solving many complex real-worlds with box optimization problems with different level of complexity. However, if we increase the number of variables, these algorithms show poor performance. And also I'd like to say that such type of problems are challenging task for many evolutionary-based techniques. Here, it's a few examples where we can face with the constraint large-scale global optimization problems. These spheres are such as industrial design, robotics, systems of medicine, and so on. Here you can see the main reasons why such type of problems are extremely difficult for optimization approaches. Firstly, the search space grows exponentially with increasing number of variables. Using other words, it calls like course of dimensionality. The features of the search space sometimes, not every time, but sometimes can change as the number of variables increases. Fitness evaluations of such type of problems are computationally expensive in terms of that we can just evaluate the limited numbers of solutions. And also it's the fact that if we are solving some optimization problems using evolutionary algorithms, we can add more resources. If I'm speaking about resources, I'm talking about the more budget of fitness functions and evolutionary algorithm can solve the problem. This thing works, but up to, if you're speaking about real value to optimization works up to one or about 200 variables. But after that limit, on average, the performance given of evolutionary algorithms rapidly goes down. And on the convergence graph later, I will talk about this one a bit more detailed. Okay, let's define the problem. Usually we can define constraint large-scale global optimization problems. As you can see on the screen, we have to optimize the set of parameters, a set of x. N is a number of the variables subject to. We also need to find feasible area based on the formulas you can see on the slide. And usually in practice, if we have equality constraints, it can be converted to inequality constraints using the following formula. And usually the parameter of epsilon is too low, like you can see here on the screen. A few words about cooperative evolution framework. Speaking about large-scale global optimization, one of the good tool to increase the performance of traditional evolutionary-based optimization algorithm, it's applying cooperative evolution. I'd like to note that cooperative evolution, it's not optimization algorithm. It's framework for optimization algorithms. The idea behind the following, we have to divide the optimization vector into smaller sub-problems. Here, as you can see on the graph picture, and optimize the smaller sub-problems using some evolutionary algorithm. Of course, you can use any other optimization method which will be okay for the your type of problem. Yeah, and in the end of stage, we have to merge solution of all subcomponents and got the final solution. Here in this study, we as a subcomponent optimizer, we used shade algorithm. Why? Because shade has self-adaptive mechanism for two parameters. Because of traditional differential evolution algorithm as scale factor and crossover rate. And of course, it's a control parameters, it's needed to tune, depends on the problem. And if we are solving black box optimization problem, we have no idea about what's the values of these parameters will be the best for the problem. And also, we can't say that we can find only one good set of parameters and run differential evolution algorithm solving some problem. These parameters should be changed over during the optimization process. And earlier, we have proposed CC shade algorithm for solving large-scale global optimization problems. And this study is more related to investigate the performance of this algorithm for in solving large-scale black box constraints satisfaction problems. The algorithm has two control parameters. The first is a population size and the number of subcomponents for cooperative evolution. In the, in this study, we investigate the following numbers of parameters for population. It's a 25, 50, and 100, and the number of subcomponents are 1, 2, 4, 8, and 10. Here you can see the pseudo code of algorithm. If you will be interested, we can reach back later. And here, what we did, we took one of the last benchmark sets about constraint real parameter optimization and extended up to 1,000 variables. But in our results, we have excluded the following problems, 1, 3, 4, 15, 16, and 20. Why? Because even the worst combination of population size and number of subcomponents could solve it. And we decided that we don't need these problems because they're so easy. And here we optimized only constraints here. How we calculate the fitness function? Fitness function is presented as the sum of equality and inequality constraints like this one. And if we are, if we could find the feasible solution, the result should be zero, if not, depends on the problem to problem. And of course, we have used computational cluster because of it takes a lot of time to evaluate solutions in 100. If the dimension size is equal to 100, we used the following rules, 25 independent runs and 1 million fitness evaluations in each run. Here you can see the heat map of CC shade ranking algorithm. In this study, we have used the following notation. Then the first number before dash, I think, of course, yeah, before dash, it's the number of subcomponents. And the second number is the number of individuals. If we achieve the best result in the set of algorithms, the combination received the maximum rent. The maximum rent here is 15 because the set of all combinations is equal to 15. And here it means that, for example, if we look at the benchmark problem number two, it means that this combination two, wait, sorry, have a change here. It means that 10 subcomponents with 100 individuals and some other these combinations could find the best result, and this one is not. And here we can see the trend that if we increase the number of subcomponents, we could find, let's say, better solutions. But it works, but not every time, because do not forget about free lunch theorem. The idea of free lunch theorem, the following that we can't create and develop only one the best algorithm to solve any type of optimization problem. Sometimes we can see that the combination which showed the worst performance in many benchmark problems, on the benchmark problems six and seven showed one of the best performance. And on the other hand, the combination 10 subcomponents and 100 individuals here showed not so good performance. Yeah, in the beginning of my presentation, I said that algorithm, evolutionary-based algorithms are scalable but up to some limits of variables. And here we can see that if we just increase the number of subcomponents in cooperative evolution, we could achieve better results. Here, if we look at these lines with the dots, they have only 25 individuals and divorced combination here. It's a one subcomponent and 25 individuals. Here we can see that even from the beginning, this combination could find better solutions. And in the end of the fitness budget, in the end of 1 million fitness evaluations, it looks like stagnation. But if we, yeah, it's before just increase the number of subcomponents up to two, from one to two. Yeah, look at this line, as we can see, it's a much more better convergence. But if we increase up to 10 subcompanies, the performance, one of the best comparable to the best combinations. Of course, it depends on the benchmark problem, but also based on the heat map on this benchmark. We could see this, on average, this dependence between the number of subcomponents and the number of individuals. And of course, we applied Wilcoxon test, P value was 4.05. It's a, we compare the all combinations between each other. And if one combination could be statistically better than other, the combination got one score. If worse, minus one score, if equal, the score for equal. And the final score was calculated based on the difference between better score minus worse score. And here we can see the ranks. And the best rank is in a combination with 10 subcomponents and 50 individuals. Maybe divorce, eight subcomponents and 50 individuals and so on. And as we can see, the worst performance in, can be obtained in the algorithms with the low number of subcomponents, 1, 2, or 4. Yeah, and also we can see again on the heat map that all good solutions are concentrated here in this part of heat map. But of course, it's fair for this benchmark set, but this benchmark set was.
Excuse me, please move to conclusion, save time for questions.
Ah, yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah. And general conclusions and further work. Firstly, have to say that cooperative evolution can be an effective framework in solving large-scale black box constraints satisfaction problems. Cooperative evolution-based approach is, approach demonstrate better result than non-decomposition approach in the numerical experiments on average. And the algorithm CC shade still has great potential now for improvement in solving large-scale black box constraints satisfaction problems. Because if we increase the performance of the optimizer subcomponents, we could achieve better results in optimization. Yeah, that's it from my side. Thank you so much for your attention.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, next we have time to ask questions, please.
Okay, I have one question. So maybe I missed, but what type of constraint handling method did you use? And also, how did you rank solutions like on this slide?
Here, in this study, we have concentrated mostly for handling only constraints. We here, we did have, let's say, deals with the fitness function. We just try to find the feasible solution because sometimes it's needed from the, let's say, industry. That the problem, let's say, construction problem is very big here. And workers said, oh, we need just to find some feasible solution. It doesn't matter for us, the fitness function, well, of course, it's matter. But firstly, they prefer try to find the feasible region. And after that, they can apply some more specified algorithms to optimize fitness function. But from the starting point, from feasible solution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
More questions, please. Okay, I'll ask one question. Well, what will be the next step if you can find feasible solution? Can we use the same decompositions for objective function or we need to do it separately?
Yes, thank you.
Use one's components for objective and another combinations for constraints? How we can combine together to find optimal solution in a feasible space?
Yeah, thank you for your question. Yeah, it's a very related question. Of course, now the decomposition will be a bit different. And firstly, we'd like to concentrate our attention for self-adaptation mechanism. Because as we can see that we couldn't achieve the best performance using the best combination and best combination 10 subcomponents and 50 individuals. Yeah, firstly, it's about self-adaptation. And the second one, when we find the feasible solution, we will try to optimize the fitness function but using other decomposition methods. Because fitness function usually has different structure. In terms of structure, I mean the different connection variables between each other.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Now we move to our next presenter, Konstantin Atradnov. The paper titled Deriving the Differential Equation with Fractional Partial Derivatives to Describe the Dynamics of Processing Process Stalking into Account Possible Self-Organization and Memory.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm here.
You hear me? Yes, share your screen and you may start.
Okay. Can you see the screen share?
Yes, now it's key.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon. I am Atradnov Konstantin Cinevich. Today I present you a specific paper on the topic Driving the Differential Equation with Fractional Partial Derivatives to Describe the Dynamics of Processes Taking into Account Possible Self-Organization and Memory. First of all, let's talk about relevance of of study and about importance of using different equations. First point is the role of different equations in the analysis of the dynamics of economics and social processes. For example, it could be a simple diffusion model or the Fokker-Planck equation. Secondly, predicting the evolution of states in social and economic systems. Different equations allow you to describe different times of time series and their dynamics. Moreover, examples of the use of different equations to analyze the dynamics of time series. For example, the black shoes model for an efficient market or Fokker-Planck equations. Next, we need to discuss the purpose and aspects of the study. The main aim is to develop the foundations of new method, methods to describing the dynamics of stochastic processes based on differential equations with fractional partial derivatives and moreover, taking into account self-organization and the presence of memory in systems. Here are some important aspects which are also shown on the slide. First is fractal time series in complex systems. Second is self-organization and memory. Next is transient time series. And last is complex behavior of distribution functions moments. Is dispersion dependence on time intervals? Fractional differential equations for analyzing complex systems. Human influence and structural organization in complex systems. Organized complexity, memory and self-organization impacts. Constraints in current models using differential equations. And also developing models using fractional differential equations to accommodate memory and self-organization in social and economic systems. Features of observed temporary ranks. Non-asked any time series analysis reveals fractional structure and short-term memory because first index is lower than 0 and 0.5. Amplitude dispersion depends on calculating time intervals following equation. This equation present on the slide, it's this equation. Where 0 less than alpha and less than 1, indicating non-locality in time. Symmetric amplitude suggests supports a process self-organization across dispersion calculation intervals. Moreover, excess distribution amplitude signal heavy tails highlighting non-locality in serious levels and it may have after effects of memory. Predicting absurd processes time series evolution requires advanced models using differential equations with fractional partial derivatives accommodates fractality, non-locality in time and states during modeling. Moreover, abnormal types of diffusion. It's sub-diffusion and super-diffusion corresponding equations, differential equations with fractional partial derivatives. As it's person of the amplitudes of duration of the levels of time series from the time interval for calculating these amplitudes has a fractional power dependence. It shows non-locality over time and the distribution is characteristics by heavy tails. That's mean non-locality by state. Fractional differential equations description of non-geral processes with memory and self-organization. And effects of fractional derivatives by time and coordinate. Coordinate, that means process state on process dynamics. The essence of the approach, change in states of the system are considered in increments of time. State of the system at each step may increase by epsilon value, this value, or decrease by xi. Decrease by xi. Let's terminate the probability of finding the system in some state x after h plus one steps. The probability of detecting a system in state x in step h plus one will be equal to equation displayed on the slide, this equation. And for the probability of finding the system in the some x state in step h plus two, the following algebraic equation can be written like equation displayed on the slide like this. It's for step h plus two, it was for step h plus one. Where p h minus epsilon is probability that system on the previous step h was in state. H was in state uh. Uh X minus epsilon uh X plus xi. As probability that system on the previous step H was in state X plus uh xi. And uh just X is a probability that the system on the previous step H was in a condition of X. And on H plus one step will go to any other state. Uh so also repeat, it's for uh step H plus one. Uh this equation is for step H plus two. Uh in this case, the value H is increased by the value M equal uh to two. Considering that uh T is H multiple uh tau. Uh where uh T is uh the process time, H is a step number and tau is duration on uh of one step. Uh of course, any number of previous steps can be taken into account to determine. Uh the probability of the system being in the state in the uh X state. Based on this, uh we can get uh the following recurrent uh equation. Uh where P from X and tau plus M multiple tau. Uh is the probability that the state of the process for some point in time T. And memory uh death M will be equal to X. Um and if we different the uh recurrence equation over the variable X. Then we can get uh the equation for the probability destiny equation displayed on the slide. Um. Also, we uh decompose into a Taylor series. Uh the left side of the obtained recurrence uh relation over fractional derivatives of T. And the right side over ordinary derivatives over X. Uh considering that uh in the resulting uh compositions, no more than two trumps. We obtained the following differential equation. Finally, this equation takes into account changes in probability destiny. Uh relative to time and memory includes um. Acceleration and slowdown of change in process parameters. And for comparison, the fraction uh differential equation of the diffusion type. Has the following form displayed on uh the slide. Uh overall, the resulting equation uh needs further exploitation. Uh potentially for modeling uh the dynamics of fractal time series in social systems. With memory and self-organization. Uh studying uh how the solutions properties relate to memory deaths M. Model parameter values and partial derivatives of alpha and beta is particularly um. Is particularly uh this depth of investigation exceeds the scope of one article. And variants as spread study. Additionally, uh the uh drives uh differential equations with fractional derivatives. In both time T and process state X uh allow for uh formulating and solving boundary problems. Uh tailored boundary conditions can be aligned with the specific of a first uh process. Uh that's all. Uh thank you very much for your attention. I'm ready to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. So please, if if anyone have questions, please ask. Okay, I I have a question. Um so could you please uh give some example where uh such equations? We can we can see some kind of dynamical system? Or what what is it?
Hmm. Um. Think uh thank you very much for question. Uh these equations can be used for analytics of social processes. And in math theology, for example. Um.
Uh so you mean like the 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 dynamics of some social system can be described with a set of differential equation?
Yes, using this differential equation uh. Hmm can uh helps us, for example, track the dynamics of social processes. Uh math psychology and other. Moreover, we have a similar work with the different differential equation. Um using equation of Fokker-Planck. And in this work, we tried to uh describe the dynamics of social processes.
And what about uh? Um for example, maybe you know the spread of COVID nineteen. Uh is very well described by set of differential equations, so. Could we use your work to predict uh this epidemic epidemic uh spreading, for example? Is it possible?
Um I think yes, we could try to describe COVID time series. But we haven't tried it. Um we tried to describe uh social process uh. Uh some news feeds and others, but I think with some uh. Um. With some change, with some improvements or changes in this model. We uh we can describe the COVID uh time series.
Okay, thank you. Any more question? Okay, then thank you very much for your presentation. It was interesting. And uh we should switch to our next presenter. So our next presenter is Anton Sopov. I see you are here. So um the work is titled "The Comparison of Different PDP Type Self-Adaptive Schemes." For the cooperation of G A, B E and P S O algorithms. So please, you can begin.
Good afternoon. Do you see the screen?
Yes, yes, it's okay.
Okay, then I may start. Uh my name is. Anton Sopov. The topic of my today's presentation is the comparison of different PDP type schemes. For the cooperation of genetic algorithm, differential evolution and particle swarm optimization. The presentation outline is shown on the screen. Uh first of all, the problem we will talk mostly today is the black box optimization problem. Many of real world problems today are. Presented as a black box models, it means that we have a set of. Values for each of the variable and. As a result, we have an objective function value and we don't. We don't get any information about the objective function itself. It usually can be solved by a classical mathematical middle methods. Then many of the mathematics methods are applied. As recent years, many of the heuristic methods were applied and. While some of methods can effectively solve one kind of problems. It may struggle on the other kind of problems. And it's a hard task to actually choose which one of the methods. We should use on that specific kind of task because we don't have any information about the objective function. And usually, we have a limited number of function evaluations. So this actually becomes a problem to choose the right method. And then it's probably a good idea to actually make an algorithm that will. Run every of component algorithms during the run. And then give a preference to the one that actually have a better performance. The problem the problem statement is presented on the screen. We have a single objective problem. We have a objective function that we should minimize in the search space. And as I said earlier, the function itself presented as a black box model. The. One of the most common. Uh meteoristics today is evolutionary algorithms. Which are which can effectively solve the global optimization problems. Uh evolutionary algorithms are population-based approaches that. Are also stochastic and they use biology-related processes. We have chosen the three most problem most common methods to use in cooperation. It's a binary genetic algorithm, it's a differential evolution and particle swarm optimization. So now, when we have chosen three basic algorithms. We need to implement a scheme that will choose the best one during the run. There are many different approaches for self-adoption. But and one of the most popular is population-level dynamic probabilities. It was originally implemented for, not for cooperation of algorithms, but. For choosing the operators in the genetic algorithm. So if the. If some of the operators performs better during the run, then it it is given a higher probability. And that's adaption, in fact, is based on the success of the applied operators. But in our work, we don't have operators, we have the component algorithms. And we can't implement implement this method. Because we actually can't use probabilities. We only have. The algorithms themselves, so we need to change the classical PDP approach. And that's the next topic, the proposed approach. First of all, PDP itself consists of two basic ideas. The first one is the cooperation of original algorithms or originally the cooperation of operators. And the second one is the is the scheme that we will use for adaption. There are many ways to actually implement the adaption scheme and to be have proposed to the. It is noted as PDP best and PDP ranks. We'll talk about it later. One of the stages of PDP based algorithm that we have proposed is. Adaptation period and population distribution. During the adaptation period. Uh the component algorithms run normally separately for the k number of. Generations. Then after the run. We use the population redistribution operation during the population redistribution. The algorithm changes the population size. For each of the component algorithm based on their performance. As I said earlier, there are different ways to implement the population redistribution. And we implemented two schemes. First one is a PDP best. The main idea of this scheme is that we increase only the population size of the best performed algorithm. For example, if we run five generations and. The first algorithm performed better. Which means that it has the best fitness value. Then it is given the certain number of. Solutions from the other algorithms. And the other algorithm that performs performed worse are actually has a decreased number of. Population size. We. We use that delta parameter to choose how many. Individuals we are taking from each algorithm and. In fact, we the best algorithm is given delta multiplied by N. Individuals, where N is number of component algorithms. Uh to keep the competitiveness, we implemented a elitism feature. It copies the best solution that we got during the adaptation period to every component algorithm. Also, we set the higher and lower boundaries to. Be sure that. Every, no one of the algorithms is eliminated. Also, so we have implemented a PDP rank scheme. It is pretty similar to the PDP best, but now the change of population size is based on the. Rank of the algorithm. The question is presented here. And everything else, elitism and boundaries are pretty much the same. So when now we have proposed the new approaches and. We have to test if the performance will be better than the standalone algorithms. We have chosen four benchmark problems. Presented on the screen, which are known as hard problems. And there are two multimodal problems and two ruin type problems. We have also chose not. Only those three algorithms, but two modifications for each of the algorithms to keep the variance. We have chosen genetic algorithm with different crossover types. We have chosen differential evolution with two different mutation schemes. And we have chosen also a modification of. Particles swarm optimizations that use neighbor topology. The parameters are all standard, recommended by its authors. And also for fittings, we use. Two sets of dimension, we use ten variables and twenty variables. And then maximum number of fitness relations is equal. To. One thousand, hundred thousands and four hundred thousands. The. We. We used. Forty independent runs for each problem. And if the criteria was the best and medium values of the fitness function and error measure. Where error measure is the distance from global optimum. So the. Results is present in the tables. Where first for rows is the approaches schemes with different delta values. And lower, we have a standalone algorithms. And. At the. Middle, we have a median value for. Each of the standalone algorithms and. To consider and self-adaptive scheme as a. Good performance him, I would say. We, the. Result must be at least better than the median. But as we can see from the table, some of the schemes actually perform better than every of the standalone algorithms. At least for the actually interest thinking function. But for for example, for Rosenbrock function, the differential evolution. With random best scheme is actually performed better than every of the. Self-adoption schemes, but the overall result is still. Better than the median. And for 20 variables, the results are actually the same, but there are standalone algorithms did a bit better work this mid dimension. Then we also made a population distribution graphs. At the x-axis, we have fitness evaluation functions, fitness evaluations. And at the y-axis, we have population size. And the colored graphs are the standalone algorithms. So as we can see, in the PDP best scheme during the whole run, the way does not have only the, only one algorithm that will be the best during the whole run. So it actually changes during the run. And but with the lower value of delta, it converges faster to the set number of population sizes. So it may be, maybe it will be better to use the higher value to keep the competitiveness between the component algorithms. And then we also have for PDP ranked. And in the PDP rank, at some point, the population size are just stuck because to they're just stuck and don't change anymore. But as we can see from the tables, the performance actually pretty similar to the PDP best. So it's maybe doesn't matter that much. And also, we have the tables with the number of runs that ended with the prevalence of each algorithm. For example, in ECL function out of 40 runs, this algorithm was best at the end at 18 times. So here we can see which algorithms were better for each of the problems. And now for conclusion, we can say that both of the PDP approaches that we implemented are demonstrated pretty good performance in comparison with standalone algorithms. And even, even better than some functions that every of the standalone algorithms. The PDP scheme are changing during the whole run usually. And while the PDP rank scheme converges fast to a fixed population size. And also, the performance is, the performance highly depends on the delta parameter and the parameters of the standalone algorithm itself. So in the further work, we will continue the study and we will try to minimize the influence of the parameters. So that's all. Thank you for your attention. I'm ready to answer your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentations. So colleagues, please ask questions. Okay, I have a couple of questions. So first of all, the question is the following. So the differential evolution with RAN1 strategy is usually performs better than other algorithms, right?
Right.
But in your graphs that you showed, the, its population size just goes down, down to minimum. How can you explain this?
That's a good question. That graph shows only the population distribution of the most successful run. So while it may be not the best during this run, it can be actually the best during the other runs. So it's basically, doesn't matter that it is not the best here, but overall, it may be the best.
So in other run, it wins.
Yes.
But this gives worse result, right?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, second question. So you changed the size of the population. If you need to increase the population, how do you add new individuals?
The total number of individuals is always the same. Or in our case, it's 300. And when we need to change the population size, we move the individuals from the worst performing algorithms to the pool and then redistribute it.
Okay, then I have another question. So you use binary genetic algorithm and differential evolution and PSO. But genetic algorithm has binary solution and differential evolution has numerical. How do you move individuals?
Yeah, while we move individuals from the binary genetic algorithm to differential evolution, we just have to calculate the we just have to calculate it. But when we need to move from differential evolution to genetic algorithm, we use the approximation. That is, we can't choose the, we can make, we can't make the same individual, but we can make the individuals that is closely related to the individuals that we had in differential evolution. Of course, it won't be the same, but at least we can do something with that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Any more questions, please?
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Gernov Alexander. What is your opinion? Differential evolution is best by inspired algorithms or not?
It was actually one of the best during the proposed schemes, but in fact, we used the problem, we doesn't, we didn't use the modifications. The modifications actually can be controlled by the performance, but if we use modifications, it will be a lot more, a lot, a lot better. And then I agree that differential evolution may be one of the best approaches for implementing it in cooperation. So yes.
And what another best approaches?
So in
What is the name of another best approaches?
In our case, there are not a, there aren't a single best approach, but the so and modification actually was pretty, it had pretty close performance to differential evolution. While the genetic algorithm was obviously one of the worst.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, then thank you for your presentation and we should move to our next presenter. So our next presenter is Kai Wang Pu with a work titled "On the Performance of Standard Nature-Inspired Algorithms in Solving Non-Stationary Optimization Problems." So please, you are welcome.
So can you see the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. So good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sri Kewa. Today I will share my paper on the topic of, on the performance of standard nature-inspired algorithm in solving non-stationary optimization problems. In my presentation, it's focused, first is motivation. Non-stationary optimization problems are very important category of issues in many practical applications. These problems are characterized by the fact of, fact that their objective function and constraints change over time or with environmental conditions, requiring the optimization solution to be dynamically adjusted accordingly. Evolution, evolutionary computing and swarm intelligence are excellent tools for solving optimization problems in dynamic environments, environments because they are inspired by natural self-organizing systems and biological evolution, which are always influenced by environmental changes. In non, in non-stationary optimization problems, evolutionary organisms need to have strong adaptability, faster convergence speed and ability to escape from local optima. And therefore, selecting the appropriate evolutionary organism is crucial for solving non-stationary optimization problems. And in my first, I go for the standard nature inspired, inspired organisms. I choose genetic organism, particle swarm organization organism and differential evolutionary organism. For the genetic organisms, genetic organism optimization organisms that regulates the biological evolutionary process. They, they ameliate the principle of natural selection, choosing superior individuals and eliminating inferior ones within the selected high-quality individuals and reproduction crossover and mutation offer. And potentially even better individuals are chosen from the resulting offspring. And this, and we can see the genetic organism flow charts. And for the selection, actual tournament selection. Tournament selection is one of the most popular selection strategies in genetic organism due to its execution efficiency and ease of implementation. And for crossover, crossover for crossover operation, randomly paired excellent individuals in the mating pool. We change some of their genes and form new individuals to improve the search capability of the genetic organism. Since from some of the individuals are encoded with real numbers, so I use real number crossover. And these, and the crossover operation formula, we can see this. And for mutation operation, individuals in the offspring population that have undergone crossover operations will change the gene's value of wealth, one or several gene locers with the mutation property. And the mutated individuals will be regarded as the next generation population. And the mutation operation formula, we can see this. The second organism is particle swarm optimization organism. And the particle swarm organism is also a population-based evolutionary organism. However, it does not use evolutionary operators such as mutation and crossover in the evolutionary process, but treats each individuals as a particle with velocity and position vectors in the search, in the search space and completes the search for the optimal solution through the flights of these particles at a certain speed in the speech, in the search space, in the, in the search space, which is dynamically adjusted according to the current speed of the particles. And the flight, the flight experiments of the particles themselves and, and the overall flight experience of the particles in the population. And we can see the particle swarm location and organism flow charts. The first, the first step is initialize the population. Secondly, you need to last monitoring particles. The third is the calculation fitness value. The third is monitor the chief degree of particle fitness value excellence. If the, if the degree of change miss the present value, then go to the next step. If not, the population particle re, reinitialization. For next step is update particle position and the velocity. And this form, and this formula like this. And the last step is determine, determine whether the maximum number of accretion has been reached. If not, then go to the calculation fitness value. If yes, then the calculation ends. The third organism is differential evolution organism. The differential evolution organism is a self-organizing minimization method that requires very little input from, input from the user. It's key idea to different from traditional evolution method. Which is pre-determining the probability distribution function to determine vector perturbations. The self-organizing program of the differential evolution algorithm moves to randomly selected different vectors in the population to disturb a vector population. And the random, the random perturbation of the population vector can be carried out independently and is therefore parallel. The specific process of the differential evolution organism is as follows. The first is initialize the population and this formula like this. Secondly, is mutation operation. And the differential evolution organism use two different vectors in the population to interfere with a certain vector and perform differential operations to achieve mutation. And this formula like this. And the third is crossover operation. In order to make the newly generated individuals have both inheritance and mutation of the parents, the differential evolution organism performs crossover operation between each, between each individual population and the muted individuals generated in the mutation operation. And the formula like this. And for the last is select operation. I mean, the differential evolution organism, the greedy organism is used to select individual entering the next generation. And it's formula like this. And the next is the simulator of non-stationary environment using moon peak benchmark. And the moon peak benchmark is characterized by a randomly generated set of peaks in the solution space. And each peak is determined by a fit and the position. As the optimization process proceed, this peak must are chained fit in the solution space, simulating the dynamic changes of the objective function. The goal of the optimization organism to find the global optimal solution or approximately optimal solution under the changing peak environment. To simulate environmental changes, the weights, the heights, weights and positions of multiple peaks can be altered. And the evolution function is composed of multiple peak values and has the following form like this. Next is environmental verification analysis. Of an error can be used as the performance evaluation criteria. The offline error can be expressed as follow, as like this. And the parameters of the moon peak benchmark program used are shown in the table one. On the table one, h is the height range, w is the width range, s is the region of each dimension. And lambda is the distance that a single peak moves as the peak, as the peak changes. And the population size of the particle swarm organisms, genetic organism and differential evolution organism is set to 50. And the environment is changed every 100 iterations, a total of 100 times. Recall the data of the best generation in each experiment. Repeat each experiment 50 times and take the, take the average of each tab of data as the final result. And these three table are the final results. Uh from uh from the overall results, it can be found that the D algorithm performs best in any scenario. And followed by the PSO algorithm and the G algorithm performs the worst. And from the result in table two. It can be found, it can be found that in scenario one, the gap between the D algorithm uh and the PSO uh and the PSO algorithm is not very big, but in scenario two and scenario three, the algorithm gap becomes very large. And this is because the number of picks in scenario two and the scenario three increase and the change time interval in scenario three becomes shorter compared to scenario scenario one. And as a result, the peak function becomes more complex and the PSO algorithm suffers from local convergence. Which which ultimately shows the instability of the PSO algorithm. This can also be confirmed from table three and table four. And the difference in the fitness values between the D algorithm and the PSO algorithm is not too big, but the gap is too large in table two. This situation does not occur in the D algorithm. And the performance of J algorithm can be said to be poor. And the orbiting speed is very slow or even difficult to convert in all experiments. Uh concurrent. Uh our DD algorithm performs the best and is the most suitable for solving the Wayne Peak Benchmark Benchmark problem. The PS algorithm is also suitable, but is this effect is worse than the D algorithm. Genetic algorithm are not suitable for solving the Wayne Peak Benchmark problem. And this sounds about concurrent. The future will focus on employing the PSO algorithm or D algorithm in order to achieve better performance. In addition, consider consider using a hybrid algorithm to combine the PSO algorithm and the D algorithm to form a new algorithm to solve the problem. So that's all. Thanks for your attention. I'm ready to answer your question.
Okay, thank you for thank you for the presentation. All colleagues, you are welcome to ask. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um so uh you said that the the problem that you solve changes, yes? So every several iterations, the the peaks move. Uh do you restart algorithm after every change?
Uh yes.
Uh-huh. So the algorithm does not know what happened before. No history.
Well, actually, I just recall the uh every best uh uh the the every experiments best generation. So maybe I'm I don't uh maybe I don't realize it. I don't I don't know how to explain this.
Uh so uh but you mean every time algorithm starts like like you every after every move of peak? Yes, is this correct?
Um. Oh, oh, I know. Uh like this uh. So so environmental is changed by every uh one hundred iterations. Uh and for every for every algorithm is almost about. I remember it's uh one thousand and and more iterations. So it will change at least ten times.
Yes, yes. So uh you have like uh uh hundred changes.
Yeah. So at least not hundred.
Ah.
If we change every one hundred iterations, uh also you can make it make it little.
Uh-huh. But when change uh happens, you start algorithm again.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I understand. Thank you. So any more questions? Okay, then thank you for your interesting presentation. And our uh next presenter uh is Pavel Shersnyov with the work uh named The Fittest Evolutionary Machine Learning in Python. So please, you are welcome.
A good day, everyone. Uh can you see the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh my name is Pavel and I'm presenting a paper on the topic The Fittest Evolutionary Machine Learning on Python. In addition to the development of evolutionary optimization algorithms themselves, the variability of their applications for generating machine learning models is growing and expanding. As a rule, a researcher reports the results of his experiments with his new approaches in a scientific article adding at best a description of the developed method or pseudo code. And then when another researcher needs to needs to use these modified algorithms, uh he has to program them himself, spending a lot of time and resources on this process. Hmm. Given the above facts, the development of tools that can make it affordable and easier to use evolutionary algorithms above for for solving optimization problems and for building machine learning models is an actual problem. Uh this work described the fittest, the library created to solve the problem above. At the moment, there are many Python libraries with similar goals. Let's take a look at their features and limitations. Uh Deep provides a set of tools for prototyping and testing evolutionary algorithms. The library simplifies the construction and application of evolutionary algorithms, but requires learning the deep to solve each problems. Stipey is a library for performing scientific and engineering calculations, including statistics. But it also work partially with evolutionary algorithms by providing its own implementation of the differential evolution method. My God provides an implementation of the genetic algorithm and allows it to be used to to train classical and evolutionary neural networks. However, my God doesn't offer other optimization methods besides the genetic algorithm. By the more targets, not only evolutionary algorithms, but also on classical ones. Uh however, among evolutionary algorithms, the choice of single objective optimization methods as well as genetic operators is quite limited. Uh self self-tuning evolutionary algorithms would be a good addition for this library. G P learn provides the genetic programming implementation for solving regression and classification problems. However, the library doesn't implement self-configuring or self-tuned methods or modified genetic operators. Let's move on to the new library. The Fittest library is an open source project published on GitHub and PyPI. It's developed using the M I P static type analyzer, the Pytest testing framework, and in accordance with IP eight. The Fittest has minimal dependencies, making it too easy to use. At the moment, only three libraries are required for the package to work. And the first library named NumPy provides an implementation of multi-dimensional arrays and operators and operations on this arrays. Uh in the Fittest, almost all functions use the NumPy toolkit. Uh next number is an open source G computer that translates NumPy and uh Python code into fast machine code. Number is used in the most narrow places such as executing genetic operators or computing the output of neural network to achieve high performance. And lastly, uh Stipey, this library already familiar to us, used only as ready-made efficient implementation for matrix multiplication. The Fittest has six modules. Uh the base module contains machine learning object and models, as well as some primitives such as binaries or neural networks. And the benchmark model contains no problems for testing optimization and mod- modeling methods. Classifieds and regressors contain machine learning methods for solving classification regression problem respectively. And the optimizer model contains evolutionary algorithms that can be used above by machine learning methods and separately to solve other optimization problems. And the the tools uh contains useful tools used in the Fittest. One of the advantages of the Fittest is its easy of use. Let's consider an example of solving classic one marks problem uh using the genetic algorithm from the Fittest. Uh as can be noted, uh uh its process requires only three necessary steps. Define the fitness function, utilize the genetic algorithm with the necessary parameters and run the optimization process. Uh let's consider one more example. Let's solve the classical EBS recognition problem using the method of automatic neural network formation. In this method, the structure of the neural network is optimized using genetic programming and the weight coefficient are tuned using suitable optimizer for real value optimization. Let's review the code presented in the slide. Uh first, we import the necessary methods, including self-configuration genetic programming method uh that will adjust the structure and an adaptive differential evolution method. Shadia uh that will adjust the weight coefficients for the neural network. And next, the data was loaded, scaled and split into a train and test samples. Next, we utilize the method with the necessary parameters including information about what optimizer optimization algorithms will be used built in the machine learning model. And then end line executes the fit method to train the model and the predict method to generate the prediction. And in last line, displays one F one measure uh obtained by model on the test sample. Uh now, on this slide, you can see neural net obtained by a method from a slide before. It can be noted that that neural network has a more complex structure than just a full connected perceptron as well as different activation functions. In additional, the network doesn't use all variables, but only three of them. Also, the Fittest project is only six month old. It can already provide many efficient optimization methods and some machine learning methods that has no uh implementation in open source. And it will be useful to compare the packages described in the review or with the Fittest with regard to the methods provides as well as their performance. If the method is present in the library, it's plus. Otherwise, it's minus. In fact, it's incorrect to compare the number of methods in packages as they have slightly different goals than the Fittest. Nevertheless, uh one can note the fact that none of them provides adaptive evolutionary algorithms such as self-configuring genetic algorithm or Shadia. Uh in additional, the packages under consideration provide only a minimal choice of genetic operators for evolutionary algorithms. Uh the Fittest, on the other hand, provides above classical operators and modified multi-parential crossover operators with selective pleasure uh which have shown high efficiency. Okay, maybe some problems with sound.
Now we can hear you. Please continue.
Can I continue?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Besides the variety of proposed methods, we can also compare the performance of implementations of evolutionary optimization methods in different libraries. Classical evolutionary algorithms cross from different libraries will run to solve the same problem and then the same conditions. Uh the only difference was in the evolutionary algorithm implementation. The table shown the average running time in seconds of each implementation over thirty runs. If the method was not in the package, a dash was put. Uh as can be noted, the Fittest has the lowest runtime compared to the other packages. Uh the differential evolution algorithm implemented in the Fittest run more than four hundred times faster than the same algorithm implemented in Stipey. This was achieved through the the use of the number library mentioned before. Uh it may seem that the performance of the evolutionary algorithm implementation can be ignored since the main consumer of resources will be the fitness function of this evolutionary algorithm. But in some algorithms such as hyperheuristic, there are two levels of evolutionary algorithms. One of each operators inside the fitness function. And in such case, the performance of this evolutionary algorithm is crucial. Another point concerned on the use of parallel computation. In such case, again, there may be a view that optimizing the code doesn't make sense because you can simplify uh simply split the task into sufficient number of processes. Uh thus reducing the execution time. But even in this case, the optimized code will win because separate processes with optimized code will also execute faster than with no optimized code. This study demonstrated a library that aims to provide productive and state-of-the-art evolutionary algorithm optimizations as well as efficient method for building machine learning models using evolutionary algorithms. Among the advantages of the Fittest compared to other libraries are the variability of above classical and efficient modified methods, library usability, availability of test data sets and optimized code. The future development of the project is planned in several directions at once. Expansion of the set of evolutionary algorithms as well as the class of problems to be solved, including multi-objective optimization, clustering and control, expanding the set of machine learning methods that utilize evolutionary algorithms, including fuzzy logic systems, decision trees and collectives, providing compatibility with the secret learned library and writing the documentation from code for code. Thank you for your attention. I look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you for your interesting presentation. So please, colleagues, if you have any questions?
Yes, I have a small question. I did not catch in today's realization of your framework, do you have algorithm for constraint optimization?
Hello, thank you for your question. Now, at the moment, I don't have algorithm for constraint.
Thank you, it's just specific. Okay, thank you.
Hey, more questions? All right, I'll ask uh one question. So um there are uh different software packages uh in other languages than Python. For example, there is the MATLAB uh uh plot MO framework with a lot of uh multi-objective algorithms. There is heuristic lab written in C sharp. There is J metal in Java. How does your library compare in? How does your library compare in efficiency or in in in, I mean, in time? How? How the speed of your libraries compared to some other packages in other languages?
It's fair question, absolutely. Now I need to compare only with libraries implemented on Python or with some libraries like NumPy or number. On a pure, on pure other programming language, I did not compare yet. I do not compare yet.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, thank you again for your interesting presentation. I I believe that this software is something important for the field and I hope that you will find some colleagues who would also like to work on this project. Thank you. So if I understand correctly, this is our last presentation for today.
Uh, no.
No?
I'm lost, I think.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have wrong information. So then, please, our our next presenter is Eduard Morozov with with his work. Um, please, could you could you say the name of your work?
Okay, thank you. Um. Do you see?
Not yet.
Do you see demonstration?
Yes, yes, now we see.
Uh, I can start? Or?
Yes, please, you can begin.
Okay, uh, so, um. Hello, everyone. My name is Eduard Morozov. And term of my report is multi-objective parameter synthesis of loss function in neural networks with evolutionary algorithms. The purpose of my work to derive parameters for the loss function in order to optimize the training of neural network model and reduce what it's given to minimum. Uh. Is everything okay or?
I think we do not. Oh, yeah, now we see this.
You see?
Yes, yes, you can continue.
Yes, okay. Uh, uh, today, neural networks are quite popular tool for solving various types of problems. And with increasing complicated, with increasing computer power, it made possible to train models increasing complexity, such as models can be extremely complicated. There are no intuitively interacting components in them, and they are difficult for human perception. Applying deep neural networks to new tasks often involves uh significant manual tuning parameters and model design. Met learning is relatively recent and allows us to solve the problem of parameter tuning algorithmically. Most of the work was focused on the search for architecture or flexible keep parameter tuning. Other useful aspects for organization such as activation functions and learning algorithms are now emerging. Last function is a fundamental element for the learning process, serving as main target according to with the parameters of the model are optimized. Um, the choice of the last function, either way the which learning and generalization occurs implicitly affects on the optimization process. However, in modern machine learning on practice, use one, two different last function. For example, for uh classification problems, use cross entropy. However, in one works by Santiago Gonzalez and Rista McLeanan, their loss function was replaced by simplified two-dimensional decomposition of the Taylor series. They work use single objective approach, using which they were able to achieve good results. Thanks to the new parameterization of the loss function, the key pieces of information that affect the behavior of the last function are compactly represented in vector. Such vectors are optimized for specific task using evolutionary algorithms. Um, in this work, I'm also replaced categorical cross entropy um for on Taylor series. And but stochastic algorithm multi-objective approach and SGA two will be used to find the coefficients. Algorithm. We started in initialized population with solutions, which in one solutions, solution is vector. Numbers, each number in 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 this corresponds to coefficients in loss function. After that, we train neural network and get two values, values accuracy on validation set and accuracy on train set. This objective function for evolutionary algorithms. After that, work mutation, crossover, and selection. Next, use not dominating sorting and we put resulting mutated solutions, mutated population in the place parent population. And the process repeated until the number of generations and number of generations is a hyperparameter. Uh. Experimental step, this algorithm has been implemented and tested on classic classification problems like such as NIST, SPARTEN, and SVHN. The results presented in the first table and obtained coefficients, we can see on the first or on the second table. The accuracy of the test sets of last function detected by Taylor series compared with accuracy of cross entropy losses. Um, all average values are taken from ten separately trained models. And on next slide, we can see on left graph, blue line shows us last function for Taylor series. And on the right graph is a uh last population after synthesis of parameters. And topmost solution of the graph is a resulting vector show us, show earlier in the table. About the fitting, how we can see uh cross entropy model starts to grow upwards eighty twenty epochs while the Taylor series models continue to hold up. Uh. Summing up, multi-objective approach of SGA two is comparable in efficient efficiency to CMA ES and criteria accuracy on training data is less important compared to on the validation data, which can negatively affect the accuracy model. Using this approach, overfitting is minimized and accuracy of the last function Taylor series is greater than cross entropy or equal to. That's all. Thanks for your attention and I'm ready to ask your questions.
You very much for your presentation. So colleagues, you are welcome to ask question.
The first question is, why do you think that it was your time to present as lecturer? According to schedule, your your presentation should be tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Uh.
Okay, nevertheless, I suggest listeners to ask question relative to the talk.
One second. Just. It's strange. Is it?
Who would like to ask, please? Nobody would like to ask. Either you said everything quite clear or everything absolutely unclear and nobody can understand. Vladimir, do you have any question?
Okay, I'm a supervisor. Is it fair for me to ask?
No, you are not supervisor, you are co-alter.
Oh, yes, I mean, this is not, I mean, I know a lot. Okay, but maybe I will I will ask one question. Um, so do you think that the method that you proposed will work as well for bigger datasets? If you train on small dataset, do you believe it will also work on big dataset?
Um. I don't know. And just need to try to train on big datasets, on heavier problems, hard for hard problems, and see.
Okay, so no, no guarantees, yes?
I think yes, no guarantees.
Okay, I see, thank you. So this is now, this is definitely our last presentation for today. So we think we should thank everybody, not only presenters, but also listeners, those who ask interesting questions today. So we are very glad that you are here and you are welcome to join our conference tomorrow.